I was meeting in order Tuesday night, fifteen twenty one, seven P M. City of Somerton, Reg. Council. Better than just. United States of America. And so everybody, we just ask, our nation, and they are, individual, liberty and justice. Oh, huh?
Mayor Jimenez Naya.
Present.
Vice Mayor Juan Castillo.
Present.
Councilmember Marcha Garcia.
Present.
Councilmember Miguel Mialpando.
Present.
Councilmember Carlos Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilmember Luis Galindo.
Present.
Councilmember Jesús Roldán. Mayor, have a forum.
People are going on, talk to the public, be ready for the public, we see to address council.
Mayor Council Jorge Lozano, Chief Personnel Officer. Reason for coming up over to speak to you is I just wanted to introduce to you our new I T help person. And she'll be joining us also getting some training this this evening, so. Uh, so you'll see, you'll see her around at meetings in City Hall. Her name is Alexis Cruz. And she's a former employee of Factor Sales and Alexis, welcome to the team.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to.
Nice to meet you. Thank you.
Everybody ask for the public. Moving on to the agenda, there's two items. Item number one, approval of minutes, city council meeting, February second, twenty twenty one. Item number two, approval to review the city use agreement to Yuma, Emily, I M C A, and City of Somerton for use of James Lee Curry. The council member wishes to remove an item from the agenda. And a motion.
A motion to approve, uh, the amendment statement.
It's a motion by Councilman Gonzalez.
Okay.
Second by Vice Mayor Castillo, also favor.
I don't know.
Both. To carry. Moving on to presentations, there's one item. Presentation regarding possible future amendments to certain sections of Somerton zoning ordinance regarding marijuana establishment.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, this is a brief update from Community Development Department. After the elections in twenty twenty, um, the, the, um, approval of the recreational marijuana took effect, and I came to you in December to, um, give you the information, give you an update, and also ask for direction as far as, uh, what we need to do next after the, um, yeah, voters in Arizona voted to approve the recreational use of the marijuana. So in December, I received direction. I went back to Community Development. And since then, we've been working, staff has been working with the, um, the assistance of Economic Development, our legal counsel. Uh, we are working, putting together the new wording that is going to include now the recreational use of the marijuana. And tonight, I would like to give you just a brief update on the, um, what we are going to be proposing, um, beginning in April. We are going to be presenting these proposed changes to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and, um, after that, we are going to be coming to City Council for, um, approval of this text amendment to the zoning code. So this is just a very, uh, brief update of what we are, um, proposing to make these amendments. Uh, right now, we have just a couple of zoning districts where the medical marijuana is, um, permitted under a conditional use permit. This is light industrial and general commercial only. Um, we have very restrictive, uh, regulations as it is, and we only have, um, uses for medical marijuana, not for recreational. We will be proposing to include, continue the, uh, the, um, medical marijuana now include the recreational portion in light industrial, also in, uh, general commercial. But we are also proposing to introduce the recreational portion of its use to the Main Street corridor and also the infill incentive overlay within the entertainment district. So that one, that's going to be the change as far as zoning districts. Next slide. Uh, some of the proposed amendments that we have currently, we have a very, um, as I mentioned, we have a very restrictive, um, requirement for medical marijuana only. We don't have anything in the code for recreational use, so we are proposing to, one of the amendments is obviously to include the, uh, recreational, uh, portion of it. Now that it is part of the, um, Arizona revised statutes, it's there, it's, um, Title thirty six, which is under the, um, the, uh, Public Health and Safety. So all the requirements that the state will be, um, requiring now are, are, are found there. And we are reviewing those, and also we are proposing to have some changes into our current regulations, as I mentioned. Uh, we have only medical, the medical portion, we have a distance requirement that is a thousand feet uh, from residences, educational facilities, uh, places of worship, restaurants, and bars. So, uh, that's part of the current regulations. Uh, the dispensary that is proposed to be located in commerce, in general commercial needs to be also, um, have a component as, um, pharmacy pharmaceutical research. We are proposing to make a change on that one too, and also we have conditional use permits required for any zoning district that is right now, um, permitted. So those are the current, um, regulations that we have. Some of the current regulations, we are proposing to, um, include the recreational portion of it. We are also proposing to reduce the distance that is right now from a thousand feet to three hundred. Well, um, the Arizona revised statute does not, um, set a distance. Uh, it allows municipalities to set our own regulations. So based on our conversations, our meetings with legal, with, um, staff, what we are doing with the three hundred, we are following the liquor license requirement. Now that the, that the use will be recreational, it's somewhat, um, comparable to the, to a liquor license, uh, um, process, if you will. So being said, uh, the, the liquor license is required to have a three hundred, uh, distance from these same uses. We are proposing to follow just that regulation. Any other question? So that's part of, I'm sorry.
For the, uh, application fee of twenty five hundred dollars. Based on what? How do you base that off, that, uh, fee?
Well, those fees that we set in twenty fifteen, twenty, at the end of twenty fifteen, those were, uh, proposed, and the direction at the time was, um, that the council at the time directed staff to, um, have a very restrictive uh, regulations for the medical marijuana back in twenty ten, when the medical marijuana was approved, not every single state ha, uh, or every single city in the state have the, uh, the want of having a, a, um, dispensary or a cultivation site here. So council at that time directed, um, staff to provide a set of restrictive guidelines, if you will. So that's how we presented this, and, and that's how it was approved. We're not basing it on, uh, fees that the, um, the state has, if you will, because the state is allowing municipalities to set our own business license fees or, or requirements for, for this particular use. So, uh, right now, we have two, two thousand five hundred for the business license. We don't have a proposed change on the fee right now, but this is one of the items that are going to be open for discussion when we. For the liquor license, I'm not exactly sure. I'm sorry? Two hundred and fifty dollars?
Oh, you just want that for the local term, right? Yeah, it's not, this is more than state.
No, this is local.
So we don't want to make it restrictive. So it was passed. By the resident, so. No, we intend for this.
Very well, um, the Arizona Department of Health Services for the license is twenty five thousand non-refundable. Yeah, but this is more for, for, for our local.
Yes, the two, two thousand five hundred is, is the city fee for them to submit the application. Um, that's aside from the, um, state regulations.
Um, I don't. I found this. I'm commenting. I'm commenting. If you may. Period at this point. As far as. It's the fact and all that, but I don't know.
Oh, he's not able to comment? Mr. Vialpando?
Well, now, I was, I was having a hard time trying to say anything, but, but yeah, I mean, I think we should have a, a work session to actually discuss this along with staff. It seems to me that this is a, staff is deciding what, what we're gonna do, but, uh, we, we're the ones that represent our constituents, so we should be, be, uh, providing input in the early planning stages.
Yeah, Councilor Vialpando, this was earlier, I don't know if it was a work session or an item, but it was, was, yeah, it was discussed prior, and, and at least at that time, council was, uh, we didn't know much of what regulations were gonna come, and, uh, the direction was, since we don't have, uh, regulations at this time, let's use the, uh, the, the liquor store parameters as it is, and, and at least, uh, you know, to me is, regardless of our feelings against it, it was passed by the majority of the, uh, act there, so at least we have a guide, you know, I equal it to alcohol. It's just, uh, no, it is a drug, but it is, was, it, it is allowed, it's legal, so.
No, it, it is, and I'm not, and I'm not opposing, opposing permitting this, because obviously, like you said, you know, it's legal, but, but at least for me, I, I think they, they should, they shouldn't be allowed on, on Main Street. I wouldn't want to see a dispensary there on Main Street. And from, if I heard correctly, it is gonna be allowed on Main Street.
Yes, it would, it would.
And so that's what I'm saying, that now is the time that, that us as council, we need to provide probably a little bit more, more guidance. I remember the, the vague conversation in the beginning, but like the mayor said, you know, we weren't too sure of what type of restrictions. But I mean, if we have a little bit of more leeway and say of where we want, where, what areas it would be acceptable, then, then now maybe is a time for us to actually sit down and formulate a plan, because I tell you right now, there's, there's a lot of the older population that's not gonna like a dispensary right on Main Street.
Yeah, and, and that, that's correct. If you talk to constituents, basically, if you're over forty, then you're against it. If you're younger, then you're for it, so. Yeah, that's a reality, and, yeah, but. Yeah, we, we can, we can, uh, discuss it, but, you know, I'm, 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 I'm very liberal on this, and if it's on, on Main Street, and you allow a liquor store there, they're not gonna be smoking it on Main Street, they're just gonna be dispensing it, so.
And, and, and I kind of tend, I mean, if our voters did, you know, uh, uh, voted on this, I mean, I think, uh, you know, the, where it's located, I think it's, it's, I mean, it passed, you know, if our constituents were against it, then it would, I mean, that message would have been sent, you know, at the polls, so to me, the location is just, you know, it, it really doesn't, really doesn't matter. But I was gonna ask on that twenty five hundred non-refundable fee, um, you know, that we have here, what, what are our neighboring cities, um, charged? Yuma and San Luis, do we know?
So we've just reduced it, right, to like?
Well, now, now that they have introduced the recreational use as well, uh, they reduced it from, what, I, I don't have the, the amount on, in my head, but they reduced it to, I believe it's a hundred dollars, the, the fee to submit the application.
Okay, so.
But now it's basically, they're doing the same thing. They just did what, what we're doing right now. We are moving forward in adopting the recreational use portion of it. So that's when they, they did, and basically, San Luis, City of San Luis, uh, when the medical marijuana was approved, they did not approve it. They did not allow medical marijuana, um, dispensaries within the city. Because now that they, uh, included the recreational portion, that's when they allowed it. So every city is different, and that's something that the state, um, allows us to do, um, sets our own guidelines, and, um, staff is following, um, council direction, and this is the early stages. We are here, we are not, we haven't started the, um, adoption process yet. And that's why I come to you, to give you the update. I have requested to the city manager a work session for, with city council, just to explain more in detail before we start the, um, the, uh, adoption process. So this is just an idea. This is a, a very rough draft of the changes that we are going to be proposing based on what the state allows now, uh, which is different from what we had ten years ago.
And then I would like to have it as soon as possible, because uh, we wanted to get ahead of the ball. When this got accepted, it's taking too long, so hopefully, we, uh, get a work session, discuss it, and, and, and let's get, let's, let's get this going, because as it is, we're losing opportunity. There's not a lot of licenses going around, and we only have one area, one property that we can, that, that, that we can, uh, have a dispensary or anything, and, and it's not guaranteed that we're gonna get any, you know, so, but at least it's, we don't put it as restrictive and.
And, and Mayor, if I may remind you that right now, we only have, um, regulations for medical marijuana. We don't have anything for recreational within the city. So that's, that's the, um, what is the important portion for us to.
Well, Mayor Council, I, we've heard a couple of times about the fee. Um, I'm not sure people are thinking it's too restrictive or too high. As, as Ms. Watt stated, every municipality is different. We, we are allowed to regulate time, place, and manner. Some municipalities have passed an ordinance that they don't want it at all. Some, uh, combination. I mean, if you think about what we're trying to propose here with our entertainment district, where there are no restrictions, where, where we're accepting on the Main Street corridor, houses facing Main Street. I mean, this is, this is a prime area. I don't really know of any other municipalities that are willing to allow this, so for, for that prime area, uh, we consider that twenty five hundred dollar fee to be, to be a, a good fee, and we haven't ran into anybody, at least any of the investors, that are unwilling to pay for, for that.
But I feel just to keep, uh, keep up with San Luis. It's like, you know, they, they reduced it to.
I'm, I'm not sure if San Luis has allowed it on their Main Street, Mayor. That's one of the comparisons, and, and this is.
Well, I, I would like to see it reduced.
Okay, we can.
And I proposed that into this, and, uh, seeing the discussion, that it was just for the, uh, for general commercial C two. So the amendment will be to, to, the proposed amendment is to the, the light industrial, uh, mention corridor, infill, and, and, so we, we suggest that those were absolutely, with your word on it, you know, and, uh, like, like, uh, Vice Mayor range, you know, it doesn't really matter. You know, the, the voters, the, the positions voting for this, but, uh, it's something that, and I knew it was kind of gonna be a fun, well, but it's just a matter of, you know, obviously, side word, it says you wanna, you wanna keep, but it's part of the discussion.
Mayor, um, how, how many licenses or application fees were pulled, um, for the facilities?
For zoning verification. So zoning verification before, uh, the state closed their, their supplemental date. Uh, they were, uh, the investors or developers were required to submit a zoning verification on a specific parcel within the city that stating that, um, that parcel was suitable for, for this type of use. So, uh, we received a large number of calls from locals to out of state um, asking for the areas where the mari, the marijuana, um, use was permitted. Right now, we have very, very restrictive regulations for the medical marijuana. Uh, but we were able to sign zoning verifications, because they have a button that we marked saying that if they were selected by the state, they will still have to go through every city process that they were required in order to get their, their license. So we were able to sign, uh, twelve, twelve verifications. And at the, the last day, we had a person that wanted to submit five verifications. Just that one person. It is out there. We know the use is, is, um, it's coming to, to the city. Uh, we have a lot of, on a daily basis, we have a large number of calls. Um, uh, just because of the, the Somerton location as a city, we are located in a very, very good, um, area where we are close to San Luis and, and close to, to Yuma. So if we were fortunate to have a, a, a license from the state, we have a good area, and, and as soon as council adopts these new regulations, we are going to be in a much better position to, to, um, to land or approve a, a license here within the city. So right now, like I said, this is just an update. We are, I'm not asking for motion. I'm not asking for, for approval at, at this time. But we have a timeframe that we have put together based on the, the, the direction from council, the last time that I was here, and the idea is to present it to the Planning and Zoning Commission in April, uh, April nineteenth. The work session, so.
Yes, we could have a work session here this month, and possibly, um, the Plan and Zoning Commission earlier than April nineteenth, that's what it's going to be.
Okay, so.
I do feel the same as Mayor Anaya, you know, this is, uh, we're missing an opportunity, because I think unfortunately, you know, people have this, uh, it's passed, and it's, uh, certainly, it's, it's community, and stuff that, you know, we may not like it.
Mayor, I said forty under, I said fifty, and I voted yes, because it's a reality. Even though people are gonna still be doing any legalism, I'd rather do it in a, in a pharmaceutical. I see the need at the pharmaceutical part. I see those patients dying from cancer or struggling with pain, and it, you know, so it's, it's, it's a need, and, and if we can provide it for constituents or citizens, why not, and I do the same. Main Street, or, you know, be the perfect, because if we do them all the way to the mess or something, you know, some people don't have the access to go out there, and, you know, this is a, so. I'm opportunity for us to, but it's, but I do feel that we have to separate before. San Luis or Yuma, yeah. Well, I can feel, I'm, I'm.
Just, attitude change is like, you see, us over forty, most of us don't have tattoos. Now all the kids have, it's just a, the change of times, and unfortunately, the different, unfortunately, the world now is like. We had no tattoos, uh, I was younger, bro.
Mayor Council, if you will, right now, the, the, the state, the way they're giving the licenses is two per county, and it's based on population. So Yuma County itself, it's only gonna receive two. There's a change in legislation. We might have more. At this point, only two for Yuma County in its entirety, we're part of Yuma County, so it, it, we, there's one that was already given, so it's one that's left, one license for Yuma County.
And we also have all the, uh, uh, the Arizona revised statutes regulations to fall back on too, in addition to the city regulations, so, um, just following direction, and, um, as soon as.
So this is something that you should go to plan.
Yes, yes, because it's a text amendment to the zoning ordinance, so we need to do that. And then we need to come back to you with the, um, the ordinance first reading, second reading, and then it becomes effective thirty days after the second reading. So it's, it's a, um, lengthy process.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to stop today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Full business. Is this the last time we're gonna see this item?
How many times have we seen this side? We need to reading, Mayor, that, that's a lot.
I don't know what. Discussion possible action to approve second reading by title only in ordinance number twenty, twenty one zero zero one, ordinance of City of Somerton relating to the transaction privilege tax adopting the twenty twelve, twenty fourteen amendments to the tax code of the City of Somerton by reference establishing effective dates providing for severability and providing penalties for violations.
Uh, Mayor Council, this is the second reading of, of this ordinance. The process was long, as you stated, we did a, uh, public hearing on this. We declared documents to be public records with a resolution. We did a first reading. Uh, this is now the, the second reading by title only. This is the last time you'll see it. It'll, uh, be reported to the state within ten days. And that will effectively amend our tax code to be current, and, uh, like all the other jurisdictions in Arizona.
A motion? Questions? There's no questions? No questions? There are motions to approve second reading by title only in ordinance number twenty twenty one zero zero one? Motion by Councilman Galindo. Second by Councilman Gonzalez, also in favor? Any, any opposed?
Thank you. And norm. Ordinance number two zero two one dash zero zero one. In ordinance of the City of Somerton, Arizona, relating to the transaction privilege tax adopting the twenty twelve through twenty fourteen amendments to the tax code of the City of Somerton by reference, establishing effective dates, providing for severability and providing penalties for violations.
Another, another motion to approve. And wishes to approve ordinance number twenty twenty one zero zero one? Motion by Councilman Galindo. Second by Councilwoman Dorcida, also in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Moving on to new business. Discussion and possible action to approve a request or proposals for stage sound and lighting for the Fourth of July event, twenty twenty.
Evening, Mayor, Council, Lisa Garcia, special event coordinator. Um, this item on the agenda is to request approval to post R F P for stage, sound, and lighting services for Fourth of July event. As you all know, due to COVID nineteen, this event did not take place in twenty twenty. The city hopes to celebrate this year's event with a few restrictions and modifications while encouraging the wearing of masks and proper social distancing when possible. The schedule of proposed activities for this R F P is as follows. March seventeen, we would post the R F P. The deadline would be April nine of twenty twenty one. The selection of the company will be April twenty of twenty one. The event will be at Council Park on Sunday, July fourth, from seven P M. to midnight.
Any questions, comments? No, we need to have a reset question.
Be nice to meet, my first time.
I hope we can, yes. There is a benefit, I think, if we're ready to go back. Social distancing.
Not social distancing, but a big, you know, big. Who'd be the pick?
We are currently, um, planning it by year. We do have a Plan A and a Plan B. Plan A would be having a regular event, and everybody be responsible enough to, to practice what they've learned for this awful year. Um, Plan B would be if, if it, if it has to be more modified, we would have squares um, and have a format in the park as a parking lot, and people could be in every other square. Depending on the size of the square, we could have six to ten people per square. And, uh, vendors would be on the other side of the, of the park.
Any questions? Wanna be the economic development square, dancing with. There are motion? A motion by Councilman Gonzalez. Second by Councilman Galindo, also in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, Kevin. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Pay down to, uh, council to read first. I don't remember. Two, discussion and possible action on an application of extension premises value permit to Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control to authorize A five three five oh bar and grill to sell alcohol on April sixteen twenty one during the A five three five oh off road event.
Mayor and Council, A five three five oh, this item on the agenda is to allow business owners from A five three five oh bar and grill to host an off road car show event at the business location located at three forty six West Main Street in Somerton, Arizona. The intent is to use a parking lot located on the north of the Somerton Court and Sports Park. All participating off road vehicles will be on display at the parking lot area. The proposed date and time is April sixteen twenty twenty one, from six P M to midnight.
Questions or comments?
On the forms that we have for, for the event, there is a little modification just to extend the area of the parking lot. They're gonna need both parking lots, not just the one. So that would be the only modification that I would have to do before sending it out for the liquor.
Questions, comments? There are motion?
I'd like to motion to approve the amendment to the state.
Motion by Councilman Gonzalez? Second by Councilwoman Garcia, all those in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number three, discussion and possible action to approve memorandum, memorandum of understanding between Yuma County Public Health Services District and City of Somerton for an early warning detection system for determining the transmission and disease prevalence of COVID nineteen to the City of Somerton.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Board of General City Attorney. So in front of you, you have a proposed memorandum of understanding. And this is for the purpose of detecting COVID in wastewater, which is being used as an early warning detection system for, to determine the transmission and disease prevalence of COVID here in the City of Somerton. Somerton, so localized wastewater surveillance from sampling locations throughout Yuma County and targeted sampling for populations can provide information to our community partners with early warning data. This practice, they've already started checking some of our water and our, they're using some of our lift stations to conduct the testing. And so this memorandum just puts in writing some of the obligations by both parties. The, another collaborative partner is the University of Arizona, who is, is involved in this project as well. It's a program and it's, it doesn't cost the city anything. I think it's, it's a really good idea and a way to combat COVID and it's been.
It's an important part of it. Doesn't cost anything. Any questions, comments? There are motion to approve, will you? Motion by Councilwoman Garcia? Second by Councilman Gonzalez, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, discussion and possible action to approve resolution number twenty twenty zero zero three. A resolution of Mayor and Council of City of Somerton approving the plan and authorizing the execution deliver of a loan agreement with the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority of Arizona from clean water revolving fund, regulating the determination of certain matters related thereto the manager, the work director and the finance director of the city, providing for the transfer of certain monies and making certain commonants in agreements with respect thereto authorizing the taking of all other actions necessary to confirmation and transaction contemplation by such loan agreement in this resolution and declaring an emergency. Is this, is this a resolution or just a?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members, Zarina Gallegos, Finance Director. This is the, the resolution that will allow us to go forth and execute the loan agreement with WIFA to fund the, the lift station and water main, no, I'm sorry, not the water main, the sewer main and the gravity line. This is a project that is necessary in order for the high school and, and all that commercial area south of that to connect. Hello?
Any, any questions, comments? No, please. Is there a motion?
Someone where?
A motion by Councilman Gonzalez? Second by Vice Mayor Castillo, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
We're gonna, thank you. Uh, we're gonna skip a summary of current events and adjourn the meeting and head to the Council Park. Yes, for the members event.
I'm having a list of our concerns.
Seven forty, meeting adjourned.